Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of the Lodi and Moore's Premium, I take call around. The acronym is AMPAC and I'm Chief Judge across the court. Today is Class 121, Class 121. What did we learn in Class 120? Well, we're continuously learning that the Moores have wasted a lot of time. That the Moores have delayed their own justice. Why do I say that? Because more should understand that now we're starting to read over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945. The Charter has set forth certain language in it, right? Keep it in mind that the Charter itself is a treaty amongst states, okay? But the Charter in Article 73 and Article 74 of the Charter has already set forth language that would assist the Moores, right? To be to uplift fallen humanity, right? So what does it mean when to uplift fallen humanity? What failed? Well, it was our governments, right? We as the people are still here, but yet what are we in the absence of? We're in the absence of our own governments. We don't have our own three branches of government, right? Amongst who is the question? Among Moroccans, right? The Moores. Keep it in mind, the word Moore is abbreviation of Moroccan. So when we start looking over the Charter of the United Nations of 1945, Chapter 11, right? Article 73 and 74. It started talking about this word called declaration, right? Declaration. Well, what does decoration mean? It means that the people had to declare what? Their own independence. But their lives are problem. What's the name of the people? The people never knew their proper name. The people never knew their nationality. The people kept saying they were black, Negro, Hispanic, Baptist, Moorish American, Jehovah Witness, you name it. Everything but Moroccan, everything but Moore. Therefore, the Charter, even though it's been out since 1945 and Article 73 sets forth language that says the indigenous people, the natural inhabitants of the land can declare their independence. The problem is, once again, is who is declared is the question? What's the name of the people? And the whole time, like I said in Class 120, who was leading the people? With religious organizations. Religious organizations was naming the people what? Baptist, right? Jehovah Witness, Methodist, right? Moorish American? Everything but Moore, everything but Moroccans. We were not being led by Moores. We were not being led by Moroccans. Now, don't get me wrong. The Moor Science Temple knew that we were Moores, but the Moor Science Temple was teaching the Moores that they are what? So even though the Moor Science Temple said, "We're Moores." Sounds good. But what's the actual nationality? It's Moroccan. So if you say you're a Moor or you're a Moorish and then turn around and say, "But you're the true American," then that contradicts the fact that you're calling yourself a Moor. Because what you're admitting is that you're a naturalized Moor, which means you come under the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States of America. And United States of America has you listed as what? American and not Moroccan. So the whole time, the Charter of the United Nations could have helped all of the Moores. But for some reason, none of our leaders want to read the Charter out loud. But the Charter is a treaty. It set forth specific language for specific instructions, right? Specific performance. And what performance is set forth in Article 73? Was about decolonization. How do you decolonize? Well, the quintessential definition of decolonization is what? First of all, recognizing who you are as a people. It starts there. Decolonization, the definition of decolonization, the quintessential definition is really about what? Putting together a government. That's what defines decolonization. How do you decolonize? Well, you establish government and it starts with what? A declaration of independence. Then you set forth a constitution. It's the proper written instruments. And the first proper written instrument we needed was a declaration of independence. And then the constitution itself became another declaration. What does the constitution declare? It declares what? The nationality. It declares the population. It declares the defined territory, right? It declares the government. And it also declares that that constitution puts you in a position where you can get to relations with other states. Not relations with other churches, but relations with other states. But we couldn't even check the first box. We couldn't check none of those boxes because we didn't understand the first box of nationality. You see, the whole time, we as a people have gotten comfortable. Because we favor what's called BET, right? We love our entertainment. But the problem with that is this. We made that our goal. Our goal was what? Getting basketball contracts, football contracts, rap contracts, all types of entertainment contracts. Our goal became global wars such as what? Uh, National Football League has what? Football rings, right? World champions. We as a people started making the goal about rings. We started chasing after Oscars. We started chasing after anything that gave us a trophy. We was a world BET. The people of the West have become the mascots of the world. And what do we want in return? Fame and fortune. That's all we wanted. And we accepted that in the name of what they call Oscars and Golden Globe Awards and I want a basketball ring, football ring, baseball ring. I want a rap award. This is all what you call trinkets. It's Mickey Mouse. We have sold ourselves out for trinkets. And the reality, instead of trying to focus on BET, we should have been studying nationality. Because we were supposed to be governing the great enterprise commonly known as the Empire of Morocco. The National Basketball Association is located where? In the Empire of Morocco. We're supposed to be governing the NBA, governing the NFL, governing the major baseball league, governing the Oscars, governing NASA, governing the United States of America, governing the United States federal corporation. We're supposed to be governing all of that. That requires a lot of responsibility though, doesn't it? It's much easier to get into a status of entertainment than it is to actually organize and govern and be the competent authority of your own empire. So instead of us focusing on BET, we need to be focusing on nationality because that is the order of the day. The treaties set forth language. The treaties say you shall return to Morocco and choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. Or you can choose remain being naturalized because that is a choice. That's the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15. Or you can look at the Act of Algiers Treaty that said what? The Moores had an obligation to what? Maintain the triple principle of sovereignty and independence, integrity of domains and economic liberty without any inequality. That's what you call Bill of Rights. Not studying the United States of America's Bill of Rights. Your Bill of Rights was written in 1906. Moores, it's called a triple principle. And you have not been adhering to it because you too busy reading literature and hiding behind religious books. Writing books, writing pamphlets. Waste a lot of time. But that time is up. The competent Moroccan nationals are going to move the people forward. The competent Moroccan national states are going to lead this movement forward. There's no more buffering, no more circles. We're moving forward. That must be understood. We gotta get out of the status of BET and get into nationality. That's the obligation of the treaties. Your treaties is a mandate. You gotta get to work, stop procrastinating. Let's get into the class. All right, as the Moores know, I always open up the Constitution, right? Constitution is paramount, right? So the Constitution is what you call a declaration. What do I have up here now? I have the United Nations Charter, Article 73, right? Which is Chapter 11. So the Chapter 11 is about what? Declaration regarding non-self governing territories. So that title itself has a duality meaning. What's the duality? You see, when you read Article 73, it set forth an obligation on the colonial administrators such as the United States of America as a colonial administrator in Morocco. So Article 73, you see the word declaration. The United States of America is supposed to declare to the Secretary General of the United Nations that these Moores awaken up and declaring their independence and declaring their constitution. A constitution itself is a declaration. But the duality is, it's the obligation of the inhabitants to also notify who? The United Nations. And according to Article 73 and Article 102, you gotta notify the Secretary General. So it's a duality obligation on both the United States of America and the Empire of But the problem is, the Moores never read the Charter, A, and B, even if they read it, what were you going to declare? That you're American? You declare that you're Moorish American? Do you realize the word Moorish American is not even in the dictionary? There's no such thing as Moorish American. How can you declare to be somebody that don't exist? You gonna say you Casper the friendly ghost? That's not gonna stand up. This is what people gotta understand. It's about a declaration of who is the question? And we didn't have to reinvent the wheel. More said the word Moorish American is reinventing the wheel because the constitutions and treaties say our nationality is what? If the treaties say we're Moores and Moroccans, then why we call ourselves Moorish Americans? Why we calling ourselves black? These are what you call non-degiers. So we need a declaration. Well, what name are you going to use when you declare? And that's been the problem the whole time. The word Moorish American is not even in the dictionary. It's not in Merriam-Webster's, it's not in Oxford's, it's not in Etymology, it doesn't exist. So how you gonna declare that you're Moorish American and it doesn't exist? Let's continue. Today's feature about a constitution? Today we'll talk about Morocco's Constitution of 2011, but wait a minute. Why doesn't that say Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution? Keep it in mind, this is the revised, right? This is amended constitution. The Kingdom of Morocco wrote their first constitution in 1962, right? They had drafts and they finally ratified and deposited in the United Nations 1962. So they've had amendments, several amendments, maybe three or four amendments over the years. And their most recent constitution of the Kingdom of Morocco came out in 2011. All right, so you got to dodge the hijack if they don't say Kingdom of Morocco on here, okay? But it's about the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution. That's going to be the feature for today. All right, so let's go down to the preamble. Let's see what the Kingdom of Morocco wrote in every angle about their sovereignty, okay? We're talking Kingdom of Morocco and not the Empire of Morocco. Hear my words clearly. We're about to read about the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution and not the Empire of Morocco's Constitution, all right? We have to make these distinctions, okay? All right. No?
Preamble. Um, with fidelity to its irreversible choice to construct a democratic state of law, the Kingdom of Morocco resolutely pursues the process of consolidation and reinforcement of the institutions of a modern state, having as its basis the principles of participation, of pluralism, and of good governance. It develops a society of solidarity where all enjoy security, liberty, equality, and opportunities, of respect for their dignity and for social justice within the framework of the principle of correlation between the rights and the duties of the citizenry. A sovereign Muslim state attached to its national unity and to its territorial integrity. The Kingdom of Morocco intends to preserve in its plenitude and its diversity its one and indivisible national identity. Its unity is forged by the convergence of its Arab Islamist Berber Amaghzai and Saharan Hassanik, Saharo Hassanin components nourished and enriched by its African, Andalusian, Hervac, Hervac, and Mediterranean influences, affluence. The preeminence accorded to the Muslim religion in the national reference is consistent with Vaad de Per, the attachment of the Moroccan people to the values of openness, of modernization or moderation, of tolerance and of dialogue for mutual understanding between all the cultures and the civilizations of the world. Considering the imperative to reinforce the role which belongs to it on the international scene, the Kingdom of Morocco active member within the international organizations is committed to subscribe to the principles, rights, and obligations announced in their respective charters and conventions. It affirms its attachment to the rights of man such as they are universally recognized as well as it will, as its will to continue to work to preserve peace and security in the world. Founded on these values and these immutable principles and strong in its firm will to reaffirm the bonds of fraternity or cooperation or solidarity and of constructive partnership with all other states and to work for common progress, the Kingdom of Morocco, a United State totally sovereign belonging the Grand Maghreb reaffirms that which follows and commits itself.
All right, thank you very much. So as we can see, Moores, even the Kingdom of Morocco, not the Empire of Morocco, the Kingdom of Morocco has its own constitution, has a preamble, is identifying who the nationals are, Moroccans, right? It's talking about getting into relations with other states. It's talking about abiding by what? International law and all conventions that they're parties to, right? So from the top, with fidelity to its irreversible choice to construct a democratic state of law. You see, Moores been taught this word democratic is the devil and it's just not true. You've been miseducated. What does democratic mean? You have three branches of government. That's what it means. That the people get to vote for their elected officials. That's what democracy means. This is why the Moores have never been able to move the ball forward because your so-called Moorish American teachers have told you that the vote don't really mean nothing. Moores have never taken the time to vote to put together the government because they think democracy is something evil, but the reality is the whole world has moved on to vote for their elected officials. The whole world has at least some form of three branches of government, except for the Moores in the West with their arrogance. So therefore, the Kingdom of Morocco became what? A modern state. Listen. The Kingdom of Morocco became a modern state after what date? After 1956, right? Modern state, but what type of state? A provincial state within the Empire of Morocco. However, the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution does not recognize the empire. The Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution has 180 articles and it never mentions the word empire and it never mentions the word Sultan. And the reason why is because after 1956, Mohammed V stepped down and vacated the seat of Sultan. That's a part of negotiation they had with France because France was overseeing the Treaty Affairs of 1912. So out of 180 articles in this constitution, they don't recognize empire. Why is that? Because the Europeans didn't want the Sultan, Mohammed V, to get his pen back. If Mohammed V would have got that pen back, he would have started enforcing those treaties. He would enforce those treaties against who? Europeans, the 12 signatory powers. You gotta understand what's happening. So Mohammed V chose to throw himself under the bus to give up his own Sultan seat just so he has some form of independence. He gave up the empire. Thus, his constitution never talks about the empire and he gave up the seat of Sultan. Thus, the reason why his seat doesn't talk about Sultan, he says he's now what? A king, right? Listen. Still reading the preamble, going down. This is interesting to me right here in the preamble. No?
To protect and to promote the mechanisms, depositives of the rights of man and of international humanitarian law and to contribute to their development within the indivisibility and their universality.
All right, so right here it says, "To protect and to promote the mechanisms, right, of the rights of man and international humanitarian law and to contribute to their development within their indivisibility and their universality," right? So if the Kingdom of Morocco is saying they're going to respect international humanitarian law, then why are they trying to help the Moores? Right? Why doesn't the Kingdom of Morocco and the king of the Kingdom of Morocco try to help the Moores humanitarian rights since they know the Moores' names are mentioned throughout all these treaties? So therefore, their constitution is questionable, right? Because when I say questionable, I mean, are they really interested in international humanitarian law? Given that they haven't given any helping hand to the Moores? We're talking about that, right? Now, let's continue. It's part of preamble, continue.
To comply with a quarter, the international conventions duly ratified by it within the framework of the provisions of the constitution and of the laws of the kingdom, within respect for its immutable national identity and on the publication of these conventions, their primacy over the internal law of the country and to harmonize in consequence to pertinent provisions of national legislation.
I think this is very interesting in their preamble. Listen. The Kingdom of Morocco and their constitution says what? They're going to what? Comply with the international conventions duly ratified by it within the framework of the provisions of the constitution and of the laws of the kingdom, within respect for its immutable national identity and on the publication of these conventions, primacy over the internal law. So right here, the Kingdom of Morocco is saying that international law, international law is primacy over the internal law. You see that? So they're saying in that constitution, international law is supreme law of the land. Well, if international law is supreme law of the land such as the Charter of the United Nations and right, uh, declaration or universal declaration on human rights, et cetera, and the treaties, the Moores treaties, then why would the Kingdom of Morocco not recognize Moores, saying that Moores have always been a part of the history of Morocco? You can't spell Morocco without saying M-O-R. More. So we'll be talking about this in the future as we start to get into friendly relations with the Kingdom of Morocco. Because the Kingdom of Morocco, let me show you image. The Kingdom of Morocco is just a small provincial state within the Empire of Morocco. Even though they don't recognize the empire, but I know why they took the word empire in the constitution. Europeans didn't want them to put that in there. They didn't want Mohammed V, right? Or any of the Sultans to ever have that power again. They want to take the power out of the Sultan's hand and they want to take the power out of the Moores' hands, you see? But after 1956, this is it. Now, you have to understand, you gotta dodge the hijack. You gotta stop saying this is Morocco. It should say Kingdom of Morocco. But you know why it don't say Kingdom of Morocco? Because they play these games. If your constitution says Kingdom of Morocco, then why isn't Google putting Kingdom of Morocco on there? It's because the treaties recognize what? Morocco as an empire, as a standalone word, just a simple word. Morocco, according to the treaty, represents empire. But they should be putting Kingdom of Morocco on there because the Kingdom of Morocco don't recognize the empire no more. So you can't keep putting just simply Morocco on there if you ain't recognizing the empire no more. You see? Listen. This is the Kingdom of Morocco's flag, right? We'll talk about that today. The Kingdom of Morocco's flag. Let's go back to their constitution, okay? Their constitution. We're talking about, the feature today is the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution, okay? We're back on their constitution, recognizing what? Okay, Article 1, the highlighted area.
Article 1, Morocco is a constitutional, democratic, parliamentary, and social monarchy.
Call. So Morocco is a constitutional, democratic, parliamentary, and social monarchy. Well, it should say what? Kingdom of Morocco, right? Being specific. But we go with the wording they have, Morocco. So Morocco is talking about constitutions. Morocco is talking about democratic processes. Morocco is talking about parliamentary procedures. And Morocco is talking about what? A monarchy. When have the Moorish Americas ever taken any of these steps? They've never done it, never. But yet, the Kingdom of Morocco came out with these constitutions starting in 1962. It's been over 60 years since the Kingdom of Morocco came out their first constitution. But the Moorish Americas and black people don't study even the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution to see that even the Kingdom of Morocco talks about democracy in constitutions. That's my point. Only thing the Moorish Americas keep talking about is the United States of America's constitution. Why haven't the Moorish Americas ever taken the time to read the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution? Since the Moores keep saying, "Man, we studying law and history." I can't tell. You've been studying the United States of America's constitution, that's it. You keep saying enforce the constitution. Well, wait, timeout. Is Kingdom of Morocco talking about enforce the constitution of the United States of America in order to get their, their justice? When the Kingdom of Morocco was trying to get independence away from France, you were never going to hear Mohammed V talking about enforce the constitution of France to get our justice. You don't enforce a colonialist constitution to get your justice? Who started this? Whoever started this, this is bad miseducation. This is a problem that's gotta stop. This is terrible propaganda. This miseducation has to stop. Even the Kingdom of Morocco ain't talking about enforce the constitution of the United States of America? Kingdom of Morocco wasn't talking about enforce the constitution of France? Where do the Moores in the West get off, keep talking about enforce the constitution of the United States of America? You know why they keep saying it? Because the Moores been lied to. The Moores been told they're what? Americans. So they keep trying to enforce an American constitution because they don't know who the heck they are. They suffer from what? Cognitive dissonance. They don't know who they are. And their Moorish American teachers keep lying to them. And the black people getting lied to as well on two fronts. Black people being told they're black by black leaders. Then black people getting told they're what? Moorish American. By who? Moorish American teachers and leaders. Black people just catching hell. Going left or right, they catching hell. Everybody being miseducated knowingly or unknowingly. Everybody being miseducated knowingly or unknowingly. This is sad. What's my point? Even in Article One, the King of Morocco is talking about a constitution, democracy, parliamentary procedures, and a monarchy. Let's go to Article Four. No?
Article Four, the emblem of the state is the red flag stamped in its center with a green star of five points, branches. The motto of the kingdom is Daïou la patrie, le roi, God, the country, the king.
Alright, so in Article Four, now the Kingdom of Morocco is claiming what? The Kingdom of Morocco flag. Alright, let's read again. Article Four, the emblem of the state is the red flag stamped with its center with a green star of five points, right? The motto of the kingdom, not the empire, the motto of the kingdom, not the empire. The motto of the kingdom, right, is Dieu, la patrie, le roi, God, the country, the king. Not the Sultan, the king. Not the empire, the kingdom. You see, you gotta make these distinctions. But what's most important here? Two things. One, king and not Sultan. And two, Article Four starts to disclose who does the flag belong to. What flag? Okay, listen. What flag? Okay. This flag. This is the Kingdom of Morocco's flag. How do we know? Because it's in their declaration of their constitution. That's a legal instrument. It's a properly written instrument. Moors Americas don't have no properly written instrument that claims that flag. Show me one document where the Moors Americas have a legal claim to this flag. It doesn't exist. Because first of all, you know such thing as Moors Americas. The Kingdom of Morocco, the Kingdom of Morocco, let's go back to it. This is the territory of the Kingdom of Morocco. So the flag only represents this territory here, that's it. But for decades, the Moors been saying, "Okay, yeah, man, this is our flag." Well, that's not true. You can't prove that's your flag. Why do I say that? Because the Kingdom of Morocco can prove it's their flag. They have a constitution. The Moors Americas all this time, and let me say this for the record. I love all the Moors. I'm here to do my best to educate the Moors. Only thing I can do is give you what's called scholarship, not fellowship. I'm showing you a constitution of the Kingdom of Morocco, Article Four. Go look it up yourself. They're claiming the flag based upon their defined territory, right, their defined territory of this being the Kingdom of Morocco. The Kingdom of Morocco, Moroccans over there in Africa have a right to say, "This is their flag." The problem with the Moors is, we never put together our own three branches of government to have our own flags. More importantly, listen. If the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution never mentions anything about a Sultan, none about a Sultan, says king, and it never mentions the word empire out of one hundred and eighty articles, that means that the empire no longer exists according to the Kingdom of Morocco. King Morocco say, "Uh, we're taking this flag with us. We're gonna take this flag with us, uh, salvage, taking it from the empire, and now making it a national flag of the Kingdom of Morocco." Therefore, this flag has never, ever represented the West, that we commonly call the West over here. Never. Now, how we had it, we've been flying it because we want to recognize ourselves as Moroccans as well? Yes. Ain't good faith. But this flag has never recognized Moors in the West. This flag has never provided any protections for the Moors in the West. Never. This flag has never recognized Moors in the West. Never. But the Moors were recognizing. We were saying that's our flag, but that's called what? Pally frivolous and arbitrary and capricious. Why? Because we couldn't prove that we came under the protections of this flag. Listen to me, Moors. I love all y'all. Not only can you not prove that you're Moors American, because you can't even find that in a dictionary, on a British dictionary, but you can't even prove that this flag provides protection for any Moors Americas. Prove it. You can't do it. You're not a citizen of the Kingdom of Morocco. You're a citizen of the United States of America. And the only way for a Moroccan flag to protect you, to come under the protections of a Moroccan flag, you have to do what? You have to follow the prescriptions of the Moors Treaties, then return back to Morocco and pledge your allegiance back to the state. And then renounce the nationalization of the United States of America. Then a, a Moroccan flag would've put you under the protections of that territory. So this flag right here has never, ever, ever put us under protection stance. And we gotta learn from this, because I'm showing you scholarship of the Kingdom of Morocco's flag. That's their territory, which means that flag only protects Moroccans over there in Africa. And Mohammed the Fifth vacated the empire, so the empire no longer had what? A flag. So we just arbitrarily say, "Yeah, we're gonna make this our flag too for Moors." Sounds good, right? I get the sentimental value in it, but did we ever do the scholarship? Did we do the research to figure out, "How does this flag protect us?" And it never protected us, and Moors never asked any questions. We never tried to qualify whether the flag protected us or not. Listen, do a little history, talking flags, talking constitution. Listen, show you a video about flags, because Moors say, "Oh, man, this flag, this flag right here been flying over here ten thousand years." That ain't true. Prove it. The Moors can't prove it. We like to just say things, because it feels good. I get it. We have been oppressed and suppressed people. We got a lot of pain. And we just want to identify with something that gives us some credibility again. We have an identity crisis going on. So we clung, right? We clung to this flag of the Kingdom of Morocco's flag. It became the kingdom's flag after nineteen fifty-six. When Noah Dua Lee was flying from nineteen fifteen until approximately nineteen twenty-nine, even during that time, this flag was not the empire flag, to tell you the truth. Because France was running the empire. France told the Sultan, the Sultans between the year nineteen fifteen and nineteen fifty-six, they said, "Y'all can have this flag, but you can only fly it where? Inland, inland. But you can't fly it where? At sea." So France turned around, and y'all all know, they put in the canton of the flag, the French flag at the top left-hand corner of it, right? It said, "It's a French protectorate over the Empire Morocco." That was technically the empire flag. The one with the French canton, then the red flag and the green flag with the star. That was the empire flag until nineteen fifty-six. The Moors was flying this one, you see? Keep it in mind, after nineteen fifty-six, it became the Kingdom of Morocco's flag and no longer the empire flag whatsoever. This is what we gotta learn. This is even what I'm learning, okay? I used to fly this flag proudly. And this flag should be respected. This is the Kingdom of Morocco's flag. This is our brothers and sisters who are also Moroccans, et cetera. We'll talk about that more today, alright? Let's do a little bit of history. Now, the video I'm gonna show you is not a perfect video. It's not gonna have every flag. It's just to give you a basic understanding of the history. Let's get a generic understanding. Because Moors will tell you in a minute, "This flag has been flying over here ten thousand years." That's not true. It's not true. You mean a flag, but not the, the, the flag. No. Listen. This video is about eleven minutes, about twelve minutes long.
Today, the flag of Morocco looks like this. A plain red field with the state insignia in the center, a green five-pointed star. But this flag only started being used in nineteen fifteen, so what does it mean? And how has Morocco's flag evolved until becoming this particular flag? The history of Morocco dates back a long time, as does everywhere else's, if you want to look at it that way. In classical to late antiquity, the land we now call Morocco was ruled by various peoples, one after another, and sometimes at the same time. The Phoenicians, the Carthaginians, the Romans, and also Isamberber kingdoms. Each of these peoples had their own symbols and sometimes even standards. The Phoenicians had their alphabet. Carthage is said to have had a military standard of a half crescent moon, plus the symbol of the goddess standard, which they used, their moon goddess. And the symbol was similar to those we see in antiquity Egypt. Here are a few earrings from that time, shaped like that. The Romans used these symbols and standards we all know, and even Isamberber kingdoms had specific ways of representing themselves, even if through direct representations of themselves, like the back of this Roman coin, where the Mauritanian king Bokus the First is depicted. But none of these were Morocco itself. And despite being part of the territory's history, they aren't as much part of the nation's history as the cases we'll see next. After these early antiquity peoples came the Muslim conquest of North Africa. The conquest of the Maghreb region was a part of a century of rapid Muslim conquests into the Byzantine-controlled territories of North Africa. The conquest of Maghreb commenced in six hundred and forty-seven and concluded in seven hundred and nine, with the Byzantine Roman Empire losing its last remaining strongholds in the region. And so, a period of Moroccan history called early Islamic began, lasting from the eighth to the tenth century AD. During these times, the territory of Morocco was ruled by a few different dynasties and through various forms. Let's take a look at those. First was the Umayyad Caliphate. This was in the year six hundred and sixty-one. The Umayyads didn't have a flag, at least not one I could find, but there are some symbols we can see, like this coin from around six hundred and seventy-five, where on the left, we see a profile image of what I imagine was a ruler surrounded by what seem to be crescent moons and stars. On the right, these are also present, plus what is described as a winged creature right on a fire altar with ribbons and attendants. I have no idea what it is or what it means. There were a bunch of other kingdoms and dynasties in the region and surrounding areas, like the Emirate of Nekor or the Barabwata Confederacy. But those don't really matter for this video, because this isn't an in-depth look at the history of Morocco. It's about the history and meaning of its flag. And these aren't important, because they did not have a registered flag. The first flag that we are able to identify in Moroccan history is the flag of the Idrizid dynasty, named after the founder of the dynasty, Idris the First. They ruled from seven hundred and eighty-eight to nine hundred and seventy-four, and are considered to be the founders of the first Moroccan state. Their flag was very simple, a plain white one. And this was in use from seven hundred and eighty to nine hundred and seventy-four, along the lines of the time which they ruled the country. During this period, Moroccans only carried white silk banners during battles and wars. And this was the first Moroccan flag, a plain white banner. In ten forty, the ruling dynasty were now the Al-Murids. And they kept the Idrizid white banner, however, they added some texts to it in black. Presumably the name of the dynasty, however, some people state that the text on the flags varied and was usually a selection of Quranic inscriptions, so I'm guessing quotes from the Islamic holding book. According to the same source, Al-Murids gave one banner to every unit of one hundred soldiers, and the leaders always carried the same text on their banner. Throughout the following centuries, the region of Morocco came under the control of a few other dynasties and a few other types of kingdoms/regimes. In eleven twenty-one, the Al-Mohad Caliphate was created, and this flag was put into use. A red field with a black and white checkered pattern square in the center of eight by eight, although sometimes this is depicted as four by four. This was the first time that the red color was used in the flag of Morocco, and it seems to be the origin point for the color. However, the checkered pattern in black and white also brings us to other colors, white and black. And some people say these three colors represented three of Morocco's dynasties. Red might refer to the Fatimids, white to the Umayyads, and black to the Abbasids. But then the regime changed again in twelve forty-four, and the Manite Sultanate became the controller of Morocco. Their flag was still red, but with a golden frame and an emblem, also in gold, in the center, which replaced the symbol of the previous dynasty, which the Manite had overthrown. They look like two squares with one of them being at an angle. Apparently, they are interlaced in a way that they form a star. This might be the origin point for today's green star on the Moroccan flag, although we also saw those earlier examples of symbols that contain the traditional crescent moon and star. So maybe it was a continuous form of representation since back then. In this picture depicting historical flags of that time, we see the red and gold one, but also the same pattern in different colors, sometimes with additional symbols, like the star and crescent moon, plus the circles, which I couldn't really identify. Another dynasty existed after this, the Walasid in fourteen seventy-two, but I couldn't find any different flag for them. And after them came the Saudi dynasty, which recovered the Manite Sultanate's flag, but also the first Idrizid white banner. And apparently, they used both of them at the same time. And then, finally, came the current Alawit dynasty, which implemented their own flag in the year of sixteen sixty-five. A plain red field. A few hundred years later, in nineteen twelve, Morocco began a period of being somewhat of a French protectorate, also being under heavy Spanish influence, considering the Spanish still controlled a portion of their territory. And at this time, in nineteen twelve, the green five-pointed star was added to the flag. Interestingly, the Spanish protectorate in Morocco flew a similar flag, also red with a green canton and the same star emblem, although smaller, inside the canton and in white, while the French protectorate flag was simply the national one with a French flag on the top left. The five points of the star are said to stand for love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. While Morocco was under French and Spanish control, the red flag with the seal in the center remained in use, but only inland, and at sea, its use was prohibited. When independence was restored in nineteen fifty-six, it once again became the national flag in all aspects. While the red background on the Moroccan flag is said to represent hardness, bravery, strength, and valour, and the green represents joy, love, wisdom, peace, and hope. It also represents the color of Islam, with some people stating that it's also related to the seal of Solomon. The five branches could also represent the five pillars of Islam. They also have two variant flags, which I had no idea about. One places a golden crown with a star on top of it, on the top left corner, and this is the civil insignia, while the naval insignia, another variant, takes that same crown but places it in all four quarters. The royal insignia is equal to the state flag, but with the green star being bordered by gold. Throughout history, there were also some other flags being flown on Moroccan territory. For instance, from nineteen twenty-one to twenty-six, a few people in North Morocco revolted against both the Spanish and the Sultan, attempting to create an independent republic of Riff, whose flag was similar to Morocco's, red with a wide angled square and a green crescent and star. Another example is the flag of Tangier. To solve a disagreement among France, Spain, and Britain over its control, Tangier was made a neutral, demilitarized zone in nineteen twenty-four until nineteen fifty-six. This flag was also red with the Moroccan state emblem on the right, and what I assume is the local coat of arms on the left. There was also this flag, red with white triangles as the border and a pair of scissors represented. This kept showing up in a lot of sources that I checked for this video, but never identifying what it represented. But some last until today, the flags of the two autonomous Spanish cities in North Africa, previous colonial possessions of the Spanish and the Portuguese connected to Morocco, which remain under Spanish rule today. The flag of Merlila is blue with the local coat of arms in the center, while the flag of Siltah is an odd case. It is located in Morocco, belongs to Spain, but flies a flag with a Portuguese coat of arms, and coincidentally, the background pattern of the Portuguese capital city of Lisbon. This is because Siltah was previously Portuguese. The Spanish took it at a time of royal union between the two. The Spanish took it at a time of royal union between the two kingdoms. And then, when the Portuguese got their independence back, the Spanish kept Siltah, but also decided to keep the local flag. As for the coat of arms of Morocco, the coat of arms of Morocco was adopted on August of 1957 and it features a gold bordered red shield with a rising sun, Atlas Mountains, and a green five-pointed star. There is a lion at either side of the shield and a crown on top, plus a banner stating, "If you glorify God, he will glorify you." In Arabic, the royal standard is the depiction of the coat of arms upon a dark green field, different from the royal flag which we just saw earlier. So that is a brief overlook at the history and meaning of the Moroccan flag, how the region first started representing itself, the various banners it used throughout its various regimes, rulers, and dynasties, sometimes even with foreign occupiers or specific cases, evolving with each color and symbol, having its origin at some point along the way before reaching today's version, the flag of Morocco that we all know. Thanks so much for watching. As always, leave a comment with any mistakes you might have noticed or missing information that I didn't find. Subscribe if you want to catch future...
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, this gentleman, his YouTube channel is uh, General Knowledge. Uh, the name of this um, video is uh, Fund with Flags hyphen Morocco. Alright, he has about 819,000 subscribers. Alright, so uh, take a look at his channel, alright? A quick shout out to him. And we thank him very much for giving us a little bit of history about uh, the empire of Morocco, right? So uh, with that being said, what we take away from that is that when we go back to the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution, Article IV, right, of the year 2011, and it starts to claim this particular flag right here, right? So Article IV, the emblem of the state is the red flag stamped in its center with a green star of five points. As you can see, after 1956, that became technically their own state flag, right? Of the Kingdom of Morocco, okay? The Kingdom of Morocco, but not for the empire anymore, okay? Because they wouldn't call themselves Sultan or Empire anymore, okay? But, but wait, when you go back and look at the treaties, like the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of the year 1787, right, recognizes in the preamble itself the word Emperor of Morocco. Okay, just a moment. Emperor of Morocco. The Emperor of Morocco signed the treaty, right? So, but what does emperor mean? Okay, we're going to 1787, okay? Looking up these words. Emperor means what? Uh, your brother, uh, Drake?
Emperor, noun. One, a sovereign ruler of great power and rank, especially one ruling an empire. He became an emperor in 1930. He is regarded as one of the greatest Roman emperors. Similar, ruler, sovereign, king, monarch, uh, potentate?
Potentate.
Uh, potentate, lord, overlord.
Alright, so emperor, right, is a sovereign ruler of great power and rank, especially one ruling an empire. Ruling an empire, you see? So an emperor, you go back to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of 1787, at that time, the Sultan was calling himself the Emperor of Morocco. Of what? An empire, right? Okay, but what's the definition of empire? Brother Drake?
Empire, noun. An extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority, formerly especially an emperor or empress.
Alright, so an empire, noun, is an extensive group of states or countries under a single supreme authority, right? That's what an empire is. So the Sultan was overseeing what? A group of states and countries of an empire. And he was the emperor, right? So now you come back to the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution and now Mohammed V stepped down and all his successors all call themselves a king and no longer Sultan or Emperor anymore. So, so what does that mean? That, that means they left what? The empire void of anyone sitting in the seat of Sultan. They left the empire void of a empire government, right? Therefore, there is no, technically speaking, there is no flag, no seal, and no constitution that represents the Empire of Morocco. You understand what I'm saying? And since the history shows that the flag has changed so many times, just so happened, now the Moors started, now claiming the Kingdom of Morocco's flag is also a flag that represents us. Reality has been on kind of flags. But we've also accustomed to this one flag that now we emotionally caught up on it, right? But the reality is flags have always changed within our empire according to who is ruling it at the time, I'll say it again. According to what dynasty or rulers is ruling, the flags kept changing to represent those people who now in what? The sovereign authority power, you see? Listen. So now, when you start to understand flags, what do I have up here? I have an image of a new flag for the Empire of Morocco. We're gonna talk about this. But first, we're gonna allow the, the chairman of the WRC Regional Council to tell us about this flag, right? Because what do we have to take away from this before we watch the video about the WRC? We have to understand that the Kingdom of Morocco's flag is that this flag does not put us under any protections, zero. Never has, never will. It's only for those citizens who are on the registration of what? The Kingdom of Morocco. This is the Kingdom of Morocco's flag. We didn't have an empire flag, for who? Moors. This flag right here is for Moors, but what type of Moors? Because the word Moors is a generic word. This is for Moorrockans, not Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans continue to say that the Kingdom of Morocco is their flag and that's just not true. Plus, there's no such thing as Moorish Americans unless you're talking about a church status. Because on a church status, you could say you're Baptist and you're a witness, but that don't make your politically recognized group of people of the state. Moorish American is listed on a church organization. This, we must tell the truth. And the word Moorish American can't even be found in dictionaries. Listen. So we're gonna take the time and allow the WRC to introduce this flag, okay? We wanna talk about this. I know this is a sensitive moment amongst Moors, especially amongst Moorish Americans. And I wanna say to the Moorish Americans, all of you are brothers and sisters. We are all brothers and sisters. We gotta learn how to work together. We gotta get into scholarship and get out of followership. Go back and read the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution of the year 2011, Article IV. Get into scholarship. And you realize the Kingdom of Morocco's flag is not your flag. It does not recognize Moors. It doesn't. It only recognizes the citizens of the Kingdom of Morocco and that's it. So we're gonna talk about a flag that represents Moors. What type of Moors? Moorrockans, Moroccan nationals, alright? We're gonna talk about this, okay? Alright, so what do I have up here? Alright. So the WRC, which is the WRC Regional Council, right? These are the, the seven Moroccan states, right? Came together through the WRC Regional Council, which is a round table of heads of state sitting at a round table. And they decided to be proper to put together a flag that represents what? The empire. Because this flag right here, the Kingdom of Morocco, doesn't represent the empire. We didn't have an empire flag. But now we've designed one. The WRC has designed an empire flag. Alright, so they're gonna talk about it. We're gonna sit back and listen to this being unveiled, alright? So it's about, about seven minutes, okay, just a moment.
Thank you, WRCs and Executive Staff of the WRC Regional Council. I will now go into the public announcement for the unveiling of our new national flag. Ladies and gentlemen, and esteemed members of the WRC Regional Council, today it is my distinct honor and privilege to stand before you as the Chairman of the WRC Regional Council to unveil a symbol of hope, signifying unity amongst declared Moroccans and the Empire of Morocco, the new international flag for the WRC Regional Council here in the extreme west of Deval-Absa, also known as the Sharifian Empire. This flag adorned in the vibrant and meaningful colors of red, black, and green represents the spirit of determination exercised by the true Moroccans in the west to finally and once and for all decolonize our homeland in which we have been exiled without knowing it for many generations and to expatriate back to Morocco. Recalling that it was the Empire of Morocco who recognized the United States of America as a sovereign nation in 1777 under the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, allowing foreign Americans to hold property and engage in commerce within the domains of the empire as you see today in modern times. Yes, Black people, unfortunately, we've been allowed to and our identity as Moroccans was concealed and replaced with the word black. And therefore, it is imperative to learn the truth about our history. Moors, I'd like to bring your attention to Article IV of the Constitution for the Kingdom of Morocco. And I quote, Article IV, "The emblem of the state is the red flag stamped in its center with a green star of five points," end quote. Over many generations and our assets, lost as Black people and therefore apiece and asleeping giants, the world has moved on and took our culture, traditions, and national identity with them, amongst other things, one of which is our flag and nationality as Moroccans, which is currently being claimed by the Kingdom of Morocco since 1958 when their constitution was ratified. The act of ratification and depository from the Kingdom of Morocco falls under the international law, under international law, and establishes recognition from the nations of the earth. Therefore, today as Moors, flying our Moorish empire flag is fraught if we don't first undertake the proper due process to reclaim our beloved flag through the proper channels of customary international law. As complementing Moroccans undertaking the arduous task of decolonizing Morocco, we thought proper to redesign the flag to represent a new emergent nation of Moors as the phoenix that rose from the ashes, the rose that grew from concrete, a defeated and conquered nation of people who rose up out of our slumber and stood up with courage under several constitutions to demand reparations and reclaim our land on behalf of the people as demanded by the people. We are the Grand Cabinet of Morocco, reemerging back into power under this law to uplift fallen humanity and save the world from the atrocities caused by the colonizing states of Europe and reestablish peace and prosperity on planet Earth. Let us delve into the profound symbolism behind the choice of these colors and symbols. The red. The vibrant red that graces our flag embodies the fiery spirit of change and transformation that has swept through our nation. It symbolizes the blood and sacrifice of those who have died for a brighter future, whereas it testifies to the determination and courage that had fueled our journey towards decolonization. The green. The first being of our flag signifies growth, prosperity, and the flourishing of our land and our vast empire, also known as the Sharifian Empire. It reflects the principles of sustainability and harmony with the environment, the environment, a commitment to nurturing the natural resources that sustain our people and preserve our heritage for generations to come. The black. The WRC Regional Council and several recognized Moroccan states chose to color black as the outline representing self-determination of a people, ethnic heritage, and the defeat of our enemies. The black represents the triple-stage darkness of the universe which signifies the end of each phase of consciousness being birthed into marvelous light. Star. And the center of the flag sits a green five-pointed star, representing planet Venus and symbolizes the collective power of our matriarchs through the Matriarchal Council. It also represents Moors standing on our five points of light, love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice as taught to us by Prophet Nubu Jalali. It also symbolizes the five elements of the universe, earth, air, fire, water, and the ethers. The stripes. The two green stripes represents a new era of time which has come in correlation with the awakening of the empire. The top green stripe represents international law and the bottom green stripe represents Moroccan law as the principles used to bring about liberation from the occupation of our homeland under the regime of the pitulations. The combination of red, black, and green and the new WRC Regional Council flag is not merely a aesthetic choice. It is a powerful statement of unity and inclusivity. These colors stand as a testament to the WRC's commitment to creating a society where diverse cultures and traditions harmoniously coexist, forming the mosaic that is the Moroccan identity under love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. As we proudly unveil this flag today, let us remember the significance of symbols that have the unique ability to inspire and unite the three oceans and to encapsulate the spirit of a nation. The new international flag for the WRC, which will soon become the new Empire of Morocco flag, there's no exception. It brands together Moroccans from all walks of life under a common emblem that reflects our shared history. Therefore, as we raise this new flag high, let it remind us that we are stronger together. Let it inspire us to continue working hand in hand towards a future filled with peace, prosperity, and progress for ourselves, our posterity, and all of humanity on planet Earth. Thank you for your embrace and support and dedication for the Moorish Empire. Together, we will thrive under the banner of our new empire flag. Long live the empire, Islam.
On behalf of uh, AMPAC Study Session, I wanna say thank you to the WRC Regional Council and the seven heads of state, as well as to the staff, the secretary, executive director, inspector general, trusteeship council, for taking the time to unite, to come together as states under solidarity to establish one flag that we can all be proud of. A flag that represents our Empire of Morocco for Moors. A flag that was not designed by the Arabs. No disrespect to Arabs, but let's keep it real. We need a flag designed by Moors in order to show that we were decolonizing at varying stages of advancement. We're now rising up, right? We're uplifting fallen humanity in a very competent way. Because now we're putting together governments again. What? What fell? What actually fell amongst Moors? It was our governments. So therefore, this flag is one of the first steps moving forward to put our empire back together again. So I want to say thank you once again to WRC. I want to say thank you to the chairman, Abdul Smith Fay, uh, which is the leader of our Moorish government at this time. Keep in mind that WRC represents the central government, the central body politic of the Moorish Empire. For who? Moroccans, Moroccan nationals. They have taken the time to follow instructions of international law. We took the time to follow instructions of our own treaties that we have to return to Morocco and pledge our allegiance to a Moroccan government. Not a Moorish American government, Moroccan government. And that's what we've done, right? Okay, listen. And oh, by the way, our good brother Hakeem Bay put this together for us, the video. So just wanted to give him a quick shout out. He's done an excellent job for our listening. Good brother Hakeem Bay of AMPAQ, right? So, as we start to go back to look at the flag that represents Moors, but keep in mind the word "Moors" is a generic word. The question is, is what's the status of the Moor? Is the Moor a Moroccan that's pledged allegiance back to the state? Or is that Moor a Moor that has been still nationalized by the United States of America that still calls itself American? Well, guess what? This is not an American flag. If you're American, then you need to be paying respects to the American flag. This is not an American flag. It's Moroccan flag for the Empire of Morocco, all right? Listen, let's break this down. What do we have here? It's called Circle Seven. We have put together a Circle Seven flag, okay? Let me go back up. Circle Seven. So we all know that the green five-pointed star had five points of interest, right? But now we have, we've added two more, two more points of interest. We have this top, uh, parallel line, right? The space, the stripe, green stripe, right? It's number six for international law. And this bottom right here is for Moroccan law. Seven points of interest now, and so Circle Seven flag. Seven points of interest instead of just five. Listen, let's write it down. Okay. So we already know about, you know, love, truth, peace, freedom, and justice. We know about the five. But we need to take it to the next level, Circle Seven, right? So the top represents international law, which is treaties, right? So the green field up top, right? This green stripe, okay? And the bottom stripe represents Moroccan law. This is what we was in the absence of. We already had the five points, right? But the last five points said what? Justice. We could never get justice because we didn't have no justice department. We had no judicial branch. We had no legislative branch. We had no executive branch. So how can we ever get justice if we couldn't justify our rights as who? Moroccans. So now we have a Circle Seven points of interest, right? So keep in mind, international law, which is treaties, those are all our Moorist treaties, right? That's international law, right? Regarding the Charter of the United Nations, which set forth international law. It's all treaties, okay? Because the whole world runs off what's called universal law, which is international law. It's universal. That all states have to abide by international law. But we're also enforcing Moroccan law, which is what? Our constitutions, the internal laws of our Moroccan states. And this is what we was in the absence of. We did not have laws. Moorish Americans don't have no laws. They have no statutes. But Moroccan states are drafting what? Laws. We're ratifying laws through the legislative branch, passing that bill over to the executive branch for the Wazir head of state to sign it into law. We have laws through our Moroccan states. It's the obligation of all Moors to return to Morocco to pledge their allegiance to the state or choose to continue to be what? Nationalized Americans. But this is an Empire flag, Circle Seven flag, all right? And this is what it looks like. Okay? Empire flag for Moors, all right? Listen. So now, these seven states have recognized the flag, okay? These seven states of Moroccans, Moroccan states with Moroccan nationals have recognized this Empire flag along with this seal of the WRC, right? So now we have a seal, a flag, and states, you see? Now, like I said, I love the Moorish Americans because we all are brothers and sisters. We got to come together, but please, Moorish Americans, understand. If you're saying, "Well, I ain't got nothing to do with that flag", well, I agree with you. Why? Because this flag does not protect Moorish Americans. It only protects Moroccan nationals. This flag only puts an umbrella over Moroccan nationals. However, if Moorish Americans would like to turn around and say, "Okay, I want to pledge my allegiance to a Moroccan state", then you can start taking the necessary steps, the procedures of doing what? Trying to nationalize and repatriate back to a state. And at that time, this flag will protect you because all seventy states have all, are all working in unison through this one seal and this one flag. All seven of them recognize this flag and this seal as basically representing the empire as one people, one nation, one voice, working together. There's no more individual processes. These Moorish American teachers been telling you to go out there and do this all by yourself. It's just despicable. We should be ashamed of ourselves. We have to lock arms and stick together. We have to march to the same beat of the drum together. And now this flag represents our unity of coming together as one people, as Moroccans. That must be understood, right? Listen. Okay. What do I have up here? Pay attention, Moors. This represents ten flags. Up here is the Empire Morocco flag. Empire Morocco, it's not an American flag, but true Americans. It's for Moors that are Moroccans that recognize the empire. So what do we have here? We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven Moroccan flags, okay? These are Moors that you saw, these are the flags of these states, okay? All these Moroccan states right here, okay? Those seven, these are their flags, okay? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. But right here is the Kingdom of Morocco flag, all right? And who is this flag right here? That's the Amazai people, right? Amazai people, right? Who the indigenous people over in the Kingdom of Morocco, right? So I put all the ten flags over there. Why? Because we got to figure out how to all work together in unison. Now, brother, the Kingdom of Morocco wants to work with the other Moroccans? That's their choice. But out of respect, I've added the Kingdom of Morocco flag here just in good faith that maybe one day they just might want to work with the Moors seeing that all of the sultans, the predecessors, right? All the sultans before today's Kingdom of Morocco, all the sultans in the past always looked out for the Moors and the Moors looked out for the Sultan. So in this moment, I'm trying to do the same thing. I'm trying to let the Kingdom of Morocco know there's opportunities to get into friendly arrangements, right? But also, you got to put some respect. You got to put some respect on the Amazai people flag, right? This is an important flag in history. These indigenous people deserve respect at the Kingdom of Morocco. And they're not Berbers, they're Amazai people, right? Let's go back to the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution. Article Five. Okay, brother Dre, Article Five.
Article Five, Arabic is demure, the official language of the state. The state works for the protection and for the development of the Arabic language as well as the promotion of its use. Likewise, Tamazai, Berber, slash Amazai constitutes an official language of the state being common patrimony of all Moroccans without exception.
So therefore, the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution, Article Five, recognizes the Amazai people, Amazai people, right? Now, I have a slight concern with this though because you can't say they're Berber, Amazai people because the people have said the word "Berber" is a what? Derogatory term. Just like calling Moors "black". Moors don't like to be called "black". So if the Amazai people want to be called Amazai, then you should respect that. Everybody on planet Earth should stop using the word "Berber" when you're referring to the Amazai people. But you also have to check and look and see that they put the word "Berber" in a capital B. Why would they do that? Capital B means proper noun. When the people say they're not Berbers. Then they turn around and put "Amazai" in a lowercase a saying it's a common noun instead of a proper noun, meaning that it's not an actual noun of a people. It's just a description. But if you put the capital B on there, you're saying that's the proper noun. When the people keep saying, "We're not Berbers". So I need Moors to understand, do not refer to indigenous people as "Berbers". Now, when you're just getting into discussions, if you say the word "Berber", you need to qualify that. I'm only using the word "Berber" just for discussion purposes, but understanding the word "Berber" is a derogatory term. It's like calling Moors "black". Moors don't like to be called "black", right? We would never put "black" in capital B backslash "Moore" with a small case "m". We wouldn't do that, right? So this is what we got to understand. So what's my point? These people are recognized even under Article Five as the people of the land, indigenous people of the land, okay? So now you go back to my slide, this is their flag. Therefore, it should be respected. These are brothers and sisters, right? We're distant relatives of these people. Keep in mind, Amazai means what? Moore, right? It's tied in with the word "Berber", but these are descriptions, okay? Got to put some respect on this. So anytime you see the Kingdom of Morocco's flag, you should also see this flag too because they're both recognized in the constitution. Now, again, the King Morocco is claiming to be "the" state, but the reality is if you're going to recognize Amazai people in your constitution, then the people of Morocco should always be flying that flag at all times with the Kingdom of Morocco's flag, at all times. It's just like in the United States jurisdiction, right? Talking jurisdiction. The United States will fly what? The United States flag. And beneath that, they might have, let's say, State of Texas flag, right? Because they're working in unison, right? You got to show some respect when you're talking about two different people in your constitution. Put some respect on that flag of the Amazai people, all right? Getting back to point. This is going to be the new, or should I say, this is the, the Empire flag. And all the other flags are going to come underneath this Empire flag. Now with the exclusion, right? Exclusion of the King Morocco and the Amazai people. But I put them up there in good faith because they're part of our family, distant family. So I'm only giving them like a side note, right? An honorable mention, okay? Just trying to make clarity here, okay? By no means are we saying that the King Morocco of the Amazai people come underneath the Empire flag. That's not my point. Just being clear here, all right? But this is what we should be striving for because this is what the treaties talk about, right? Okay, now you go over to the treaty. Act Outcasters of nineteen oh six, okay? In nineteen oh six, you go down to Articles One and Two. It starts to mention these parties, okay? So Article One and Two starts to talk about parties. Okay, brother Dre, can you read, uh, chapter one?
Chapter one, Declaration of Relatives to Organization of the Police. Article one, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize the police declares that the following provision should be made.
So it's about the Sultan, right? First, in Article Two, it says who? Continue.
Article Two, the police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Ma'zin from Moorish Mohammedans, commanded by Moorish Khais, and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce.
Okay, so right here in the English text, right? Keep in mind, you got French, you got French and English, okay? French and English. French to the left, English on the right. So over here, you got the word "Moors", right? It's about the Moors, okay? Moorish Mohammedans, right? Moorish Khais and Moors of who? You look over here, it says, "Moroccans, Moroccans, Moorish, Moors", right? But it's also got the word "Ma'zin", right? But if you take a look at the word "Ma'zin", it's also very close to the word "Amazai", right? So the Amazai people, if you go back to the Kingdom of Morocco's, Kingdom of Morocco's constitution, Amazai people, see that? Amazai, Amazai, right? Ma'zin. You can see similarities, you see? So you got to understand that even in the Act Outcasters of nineteen oh six, okay? Ma'zin, right? Which is a government, okay? So you're choosing indigenous people to be a part of the government because the only thing the sultans want to do is sit back and allow the indigenous people to run the land, all right? The inhabitants of the land is running the governments, okay? Got to understand what's happening here. And this is what Moors are supposed to be doing. We were supposed to be running what? The empire with what? Sovereign authority, right? Sovereign authority of the Ma'zin. Well, what's a Ma'zin? Okay, as a reminder, what's a Ma'zin? Okay, brother Dre.
Ma'zin, Arabic, Moroccan Arabic, Berber languages, is the governing institution in Morocco and in pre-nineteen fifty-seven Tunisia, centered on the monarch and consisting of royal notables, top-ranking military personnel, landowners, security service bosses, civil servants, and other well-connected members of the establishment. The term "Ma'zin" is also popularly used in Morocco as a word meaning state or government.
All right, so the word "Ma'zin", "Ma'zin", okay? The word "Ma'zin", right? The term "Ma'zin", right? Meaning state or government. This is what the Moors were in the absence of, right? Ma'zin. Okay, go back over to Act Outcasters of nineteen oh six. We were in the absence of a Ma'zin, Article Two. Who's supposed to be running the Ma'zin? The state of government? Moors. Okay? So we had to put the governments back together. We had to reestablish the state under post-laminium per consanguinity, right? To restore it back. How do you restore it? Okay, how do you restore land, okay? Through the proper instrument called what? Constitution. That's AMPAQ's constitution. It represents one Moroccan state. It was about what? It's about the Law of Restoration. How do you restore land? It's with a declaration of independence. Declaration of Independence, right? And then what? Constitution. But the constitution is also what? A declaration, right? We're talking Article seventy-three of the Charter of the United Nations about the declaration, right? And you're declaring something, all right? So what do we declare? We declare the Law of Restoration under what's called post-laminium per consanguinity, right? It means to restore the land after the fact, right? So post, right? So post after the fact colonization, now we're decolonization, decolonizing, right? Saying, "Kofa, we're reaching back and bringing back our laws." It was all about our laws, Moors. The law, law. Okay, listen. You go back to your treaties of eighteen eighty, it's about laws. Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, right? You go down to Article fifteen, listen to me. Go to Article fifteen, and it was about what? It was about the laws, the laws, the laws of the empire. We needed laws. We had to submit to the laws, starting with Declaration of Independence and Constitution. Constitution, the first law that we tried to subscribe to, right? Of what? The empire. So now, our constitutions act as law. So we return back to the Law of Constitutions. And then through our constitutions, we were able to become parties to our treaties to fulfill our obligation of being the sovereign authority. Now, we start establishing states, listen. We start establishing states with our own flags, right? Now, with our own state flags, okay? We also need an Empire flag. Because these are all what you call state flags. All nine of these, all nine of these are state flags. But where's the Empire flag? all nine of these are state flags, but where's the empire flag? We were in the absence of empire flag, you see? Now we have one. There's the empire flag, right? Okay, so now we have an empire flag for these seven states, and this list will continue to grow. It end up being, you know, eight states, nine states, ten states. We'll keep growing, right? Throughout the empire of Morocco, right? And this flag will represent the entire empire, no matter where this flag flies, no matter where on planet Earth. This will be the empire flag to represent Moors, right? The sovereignty of Moors everywhere on planet Earth, you see, of an empire. The Kingdom of Morocco doesn't recognize the empire no more. They only recognize their small little state. Right? So this is why, going back to this, this image. This image right here. You see down here? This land right here is being t- contested, Western Sahara. Wh- why is the King Morocco having problems trying to claim this land down here in the Western Sahara? It's because the King of Morocco waived their right of the empire after nineteen fifty-six. But as of today, they still want to claim the Western Sahara that used to be a part of the empire. But if the King Morocco says, "No, this is just their territory, Kingdom of Morocco nineteen fifty-six." Now they, also now they want to claim some more territory. Because they want to do what? They want to get back to the principles of the empire where they waived waived their right of claim of the empire because their constitution does not recognize the empire. It does not recognize the Sultan no more. The empire, the Sultan potentially could have claimed Western Sahara. But can't no king of a small provincial state cross over into the extraterritorial jurisdiction of somebody else's territory. Keep it in mind, the United Nations are already giving information to Morocco to say, "Hey, uh, you, you, you have no claim over that jurisdiction." But the King Morocco, just, I'm trying to make a point, listen. Because you got a lot of Moroccans in the Kingdom of Morocco who honestly believe it, they get to claim the territory of Western Sahara. And they're entitled to their opinion. But the reality is, their constitution said that international law was supreme. Didn't it say that in the preamble? If international law supreme and international, uh, uh, charter member said it, "No, you have no claim," then they have to respect that, right? But what's my real point? See, they're trying to claim as if it's still a part of the empire. You waived your rights. I'm talking to the Moroccans right now in the Kingdom of Morocco. Go back and read these treaties. Go back and understand the Act of Asers of nineteen oh six. Go back and read the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. Read your own constitution and you'll see that your, your, your state is not claiming the empire no more, which means you have no claim to any other territories. No different than these states right here. Listen. These states right here. All these flag, all these seals represent seven territories, okay? All these flags down here represent seven territories. Alright, three, four, five, six, seven. But none of these flags represent extraterritorial jurisdiction into another Moors territory that's our neighboring state. Right? Take, for instance, this is ANPAC's flag, okay? We reclaim, we restore on a successor of the, what the charter state commonly known as the State of Colorado. But the State of Colorado had its own latitude longitude. We only took over what? The borders of the latitude longitude of the State of Colorado, even though it's a charter, technically not a state, small case S. But we couldn't just turn around and say, "We're gonna take over Utah, Wyoming, et cetera." That would be crossing over into someone else's territory, the other Moors in Utah. The other Moors in Wyoming. The other Moors in New Mexico, right? Et cetera. We, we couldn't do that. Why? Because we're only one state. ANPAC is not claiming to be what? The empire. We're just claiming a whole little small state. That's it. Just like the rest of these Moors on here as well with their states, okay? They're only claiming their territory, alright? So going back to the Kingdom of Morocco. Okay? All you can do is claim your own one state because you're not claiming the empire no more. You waived your rights. That must be understood, okay? Alright, listen. What do I have up here? We have to understand about the Moors. Because the Moors are all over planet Earth. All over. We got our artifacts everywhere. What are the art of facts? What's pyramids? Hubble properties, which is all these granite capital buildings. All the Europeans are sitting in our capital buildings all over planet Earth. The same governmental buildings everywhere on planet Earth. Because the Moors built these buildings, indigenous people, right? So these right here, these, these are symbols of Moors even in Europe. Right? We, we gotta keep it real. Who are the Moors? These are the Moors. Right? Everybody on planet Earth is a descendant of someone that's depicted that looks like this. These strong brothers right here are very, very dark, and everybody comes from these people. And this man right here comes from his mother, and his mother looked just like him. Everybody on planet Earth, everybody comes from the genetics of these people, this complexion, all of us. And these, this is what the Europeans was putting together to show respect to the Moors. And we should all honor the Moors. We as Moors should, should honor our ancestors. The fact they used to govern. We gotta get back into government. That's my point. We used to govern even in Europe. Much less other places on planet Earth. These are the seals, the, the coats of arms, right? See right there? Europe, Europe images, these are pendants, emblems, statues over in Europe. And we gotta start keeping it real. The Moors governed the planet. And we gotta get back to governance. And we need a flag that represented the Moors. We needed provincial flag to represent all of our individual states, right? Because we got fractionalized, right? We got displaced. Our empire got broke up like Humpty Dumpty, right? Listen, going back to flags. I'm talking flags. I'm talking flags. This is ANPAC's flag, okay? This is ANPAC's flag. When we designed our flag, our five points, five-point green star, right? And I don't know if you can see it, but, but it has voids, okay? The lines don't touch. They don't cross over. Okay? It has what you call negative spacing. The lines don't touch, okay? So because of that, matter of fact, let me get a better example. Get our flag. In our flag, okay? Our flag. In our flag, we have spacing between the stars, okay? Get my bearing here. Hope everyone can see that. There's negative spacing, just a moment. Negative spacing here, okay? You have voids. Why, why do we put those voids to make sure the lines don't touch? It's because our, our symbol in the middle, that star represented the fact that the empire had been fractionalized. Right? We had all been displaced as a people. Our governments got broken up. So therefore, this star represents a duality. It represents the fact we got fractionalized and now we're doing what? Coming back together. Has a duality meaning of being separated, now coming back together. That's why the lines don't touch on our green star. It look like Humpty Dumpty. Humpty Dumpty fell down. Now we gotta pull Humpty back together again. So when ANPAC started, we recognized the empire had been fractionalized. Our governments were broken apart. Now we're bringing them back together one state at a time. It's very important to understand about what, what, what our star actually represented. It's very important, alright? Flags mean a lot to people. But we also needed one flag that represented all of our Moroccan states, right? And we established that as well, okay? Just a moment. What we have to understand is we needed an empire flag. And that's the empire flag right there that represents all of our states, right? That way we can start to unite. Right? We don't need no separatism. We gotta come together, right? So you got independent states, right? Paying, uh, respects to an empire flag that way we all have a common denominator. We're all on the same page, we're one team. This flag represents team colors. That's your, that's your, that's your uniform, right? That's your jersey right there. This is what you wear to represent all of us. And Moorish Americans need to understand, this is a Moroccan flag and not an American flag. Moorish Americans gotta understand, this flag rec- re- represents Moroccan nationals and not Moorish Americans. Moorish Americans, if you want to come under protections of the empire of Morocco, then you gotta return to a Moroccan state and pledge your allegiance to said state. But until then, you're gonna either remain stateless or a naturalized citizen of the United States of America. So in my closing, I say this. Long live the empire.
Ayew Dan. Isma.
Isma.
Isma.